Is anyone recording meeting for the public? Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call please, Mr. Boyer.
Mrs. Herrenz.
Here.
Mr. Hershen.
Here.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our visitors tonight. Upcoming meetings, we have a financing facilities workshop on January 24th here in this boardroom. We have a committee of the whole meeting on February 12 at 4:45 here. And we have a school board business meeting in February 26 at 6 o'clock here. We'll move on to liaison reports. BCTC, Mrs. Torres.
On January 12, board members and superintendents met at BCTC West for a scheduled tour of facilities and programs, which was informative and inspirational, seeing the advancements and opportunities for young people who are career focused. And I was pleased to know that this year's applicants have outnumbered previous years, which indicated growth in interest in technical programs for students. No other meetings have occurred, and upcoming meeting will be held on January 23. Thank you.
BCIU, Mr. Hershen.
Sure, we had a meeting on this past Thursday, the 18th. One thing of note is that they shared the art contest, one artist serving school. So this was the Wyomissing winner Samantha Caraballo. I'm not sure if I said her name right. This gets to be here somewhere for us. So that's pretty neat. It's really cool to see all the different art from all the different schools. And the one other thing of note is the BCIU had to raise their budget for the second time in eight years, I believe, which they did a whole formula of math, and it's going to come out to a couple hundred dollars more for us, but we just have to vote on that at some point before April. And our next meeting is the third Thursday in February.
Thank you for representing us at those long meetings. Taylor says they're three hours, but thank you very much.
It was fun to feed you.
Burke, the IT, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you. We met on December 14 via Zoom. We reviewed the executive director's goals, which is one goal is to complete the business privilege rollout of the new regulations or just revise the regulations. We already went through this part as a district. We were the first ones to go through, which then we will also be the first group to go through in the Don Lincoln Business Privilege Tax Collection campaign, which is good. Collections have been up, including earned income taxes over 3.19%, which we will reflect at in our 24-25 budget. Business privilege tax collections are actually down, but that's only because Wes Redden pulled out the bureau. They are now getting collected by Bertheimer, so that's why that decreased. And our next meeting will be in March.
Thank you very much. Wyomissing Area Education Foundation, WAVE, Mrs. Savinsky.
I attended the WAVE board meeting this afternoon. I was impressed with the board. It was nice to meet all of them. They approved a grant today for a recording studio that I think was previously discussed that will be available to all of the buildings, I believe, for use. They even talked about possibly alumni and others being able to take advantage of that. Their treasurer, who's been a longstanding treasurer on the board, that they're going to start looking for a treasurer, I believe, and so if anyone knows someone that has that kind of background, you can kind of go for that. And their next meeting is, the next board meeting is on February 20 at 6:30 in this room. And that was today.
Great. Thank you very much. PTA, Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you. PTA held their meeting January 11 in the evening over at The Hills. We had quite a bit of members show up, which was really nice. We discussed reorganization for the following year for the executive positions. We reviewed many upcoming events. Being that we are in the cold winter months, PTA is trying to create some family community events. Unfortunately, we were supposed to have our first one on Friday evening at the skateaway. That is to be rescheduled. It depends on the availability. Another event that they are looking at having for the families is a royal study. So they are thinking either at the end of February or possibly early March for that event as well. We are happily gaining membership, and we want to say thank you to our administration and for our IT crew for helping us with that. But we still stress the need that we still give new members to pick up. And then we are also hosting the Blue Dance, March 15, over at REC. And our next meeting will be held March 7 at The Hills at 9:30 in the morning.
Great. Thank you. Were they pretty happy with the outcome of holiday shop?
Absolutely.
That was incredible.
Parents were so excited.
The amount of work that the volunteers put into that is unbelievable. Yeah, great. Thank you. School board recognition, Mr. Soria.
Thank you. Each year, this time of year, we take a moment just to step back and thank our school board members for all the work they do. Obviously, we see the public meetings, and there's sometimes two, three, or four meetings in a month. There's a lot of information to read, to comprehend, and help you make votes. And then there's working in the community, listening to conversations, going to events, talking with stakeholders. So we have a couple things on your way out. We do have a small gift, just as a token of our appreciation. We know it's a gift you'll be able to use to stay warm at events when you come out to cheer on the Spartans or participate in different kinds of events. And then I have a statement that's prepared by PSBA that I'd like to read and enter into the record as well. In honor of the commitment and time school board directors volunteer on behalf of our schools and communities all year long, January is designated School Director Recognition Month. The work of these public servants is vital to the success of our students and schools. School board directors' work is complex and diverse. From voting on budgets to adopting policy to conducting comprehensive planning, school boards make key decisions that drive public education. School directors devote, on average, 10 hours each month to board business, which has only been made more challenging by the ongoing effects of the pandemic and related issues that impact the well-being of our students and families. Board service is unpaid, and school directors are often motivated to pursue the role out of a desire to benefit their communities. The vast majority of school directors indicated their primary reason for serving is to give back or contribute to public education or to improve educational outcomes for students. School directors are locally elected officials focused on improving the townships and boroughs in which they live. About 41% of school directors serve the district they once attended as a student, and 94% are parents of students who attend or did attend the district they served. They are our fellow neighbors, local leaders, coworkers, parents, and friends. As citizens and parents, the success of our schools is a collective interest. This month, recognize your school directors for the time and dedication they put in each month. Your appreciation is a great encouragement to these public servants as they help ensure our schools remain a pathway to opportunity for every student. So on behalf of the entire district, staff, students, and residents, just like to say thank you to our school board members. Don't forget a gift on the way out, so you can give a round of applause. Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the time of public comment. Public comment will be welcomed during this time in the meeting, as indicated on the agenda, pursuant to Section 710.1 of the Sunshine Act. Members of the public wishing to speak during public comment will be asked to state their full name and address. As stated in School Board Policy 903, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question individual board members, district employees, students, or community members. The public comment agenda time is not a time for dialogue with the board, although the board president may respond or request another board member or administrator to respond. Generally, the board will simply listen to comments and thereafter determine when and how to address such comments as deemed appropriate. Participants are permitted three minutes to address the board. Is there anyone who has public comment?
I do.
Thank you. Would you come up here to this table?
Sure.
Hello.
Hi.
Could you tell us your name and address?
Sure thing. My name's Hala Keeny. My address is 200 Kentland West Drive.
Thank you very much.
I'm here because of what I've heard recently, we as a community intend to do in the seventh and eighth grade. Right now, it sounds like they're going to be adding some more math, which is a good thing. However, they're going to be cutting into phys ed and music, which is a bad thing. I'm not here to say that we shouldn't have more math, because maybe we should have more math. Math is good. But I also think that physical education and music are good, too. And right now, everyone's looking at it and saying, our math grades are low. We need to do something right now. And the thing we need to do is we need more math, and a place to do that is right here because it's the easiest place to do it because it's at the end of the day. What isn't happening is we're not opening up the schedule, trying to find other places like study halls or places like that where we could take those hours and still have more math, which we've all agreed is good, but not have less music and less PE, which is not good. We are doing this only to the academic kids. Accelerated kids will still get to go to all of their ensembles. They'll still get to go to them as often as they should. The kids who are going to get hurt by this are the academic kids, the kids who maybe really need that phys ed time or really need that music because they're not on a high track here. And although Wyomissing is an amazing school, if your kids are really, really accelerated and really, really smart, Wyomissing, and it's a great, great school I hear for kids who need remedial help, those kids in the middle, those academic kids, Wyomissing frequently doesn't meet those kids' needs, and this is another example of that. This schedule in this school district has not been touched. I am reliably informed since the 1990s. It is an incredible mess, as everyone will find out when your kids get to high school because high school kids have trouble taking all different subjects because of when they're offered and because the schedule hasn't been moved or changed in many ways, except to add things. I ask my kids, when did you guys take band? Both of my kids had to take independent studies in band because AP Language is held at the same time as band. Independent study in band for most kids, now my older daughter is really into her instruments, and that's a different story, but band is a thing we do with other people. Independent study in band is like an oxen moor. Because we don't want to deal with the schedule, we're hurting our kids and taking away phys ed and music, and that's wrong.
You have 10 seconds.
We should do the hard thing. We're the adults. They're the kids. They should get it easier. And if that means that administration and school board and everybody else has to dig into this schedule and do it harder, that's what it should be. That's why we're paid. That's why they're kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jim McHale, and I live at 1215 Cleveland. I'm here to talk also, coincidentally, about changes in the seventh and eighth grade academic math program being considered for next year. And it's good that you had identified the need for improving math scores, and I applaud the efforts to address this issue. In the presentation of the board last, the last board meeting, looks like there are two significant changes being discussed. One change would be to have the course sequence for academic math students to follow the Pennsylvania standard for math curriculum. Algebra I is recognized by Pennsylvania as a ninth grade subject. And instead of accelerating toward Algebra I in eighth grade, which we've been doing, will now be offered in ninth grade. The seventh and eighth grade courses will be aimed at developing more math skills so that the kids in ninth grade will have greater success in Algebra I. And that seems like a reasonable change. The other change, and the reason I'm here addressing you, is the altering the students' schedules for the two additional math periods. My first concern about this is adding the additional math instruction negatively affects both PE and music program. The effect at seventh and eighth grade students in academic math will have less PE and less math, less music. Both PE and music departments will be negatively affected. In the case of the music program, they are seeing a post code participation resurgence in their programs. And adjusting students' schedules, as is being contemplated, will certainly be a step back for the music program. My second concern is from an academic math student's perspective, this will feel like punishment. There's no question about it. They will have to do a subject much more than they do now they don't necessarily love to do. These students are not high achieving math students, and now they will have to give up other activities they may enjoy as punishment, and that is the way they're going to proceed it. My final concern is making changes to both the course sequence and the schedule change at the same time makes measuring improvements much more difficult because now you have two factors going together. Making just the course sequence and not the schedule change would be a far better first step. I would urge you to make the change to the course sequence and see how that works before negatively affecting two other course offerings and making more invasive changes to the students' schedules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Is there anybody else that I'd like to address before? Thank you. Visitors, you are welcome to stay, but if you were here mostly to, we're not going to talk anymore about the math program changes tonight, not on the agenda, so I just, you're welcome to stay or not, as you wish, but thank you all for your time. Routine approvals. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following. November 13, 2023, Board of School Directors Meeting Minute. December 7, 2023, Board of School Directors Reorganization Meeting Minute. Treasurer's Report for the Months of November and December 2023. Payment of Bills for the Months of November and December as listed in the financial packet. Do I have a motion? So, thank you. A second? Second. Is there any discussion? I do have one quick question in regard to the building. I had a break after that. I just have one quick question in regard to the building. I couldn't have it moved. One item, flexi felt for tables and chairs.
Was it, I'm sorry?
So it was flexi felt for tables and chairs?
Yes, there's probably the pads for underneath of the furniture for upstairs.
Okay, how, like, because I just saw that number, and I was like, wow, that's a lot of money.
Yes, that went on all of the new furniture. If you had spent some time in the district office when we got the new furniture, and the furniture was lighter and they were moving it around, it created quite a racket.
Oh, okay.
And both not just down here, but also in the academic setting upstairs, that teachers were actually discussing it. So we had to make a change to manufacture. We went through multiple options for manufacturer, and that was for every single basically chair and new desk that the district had purchased.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know, if there's a whole lot of chairs or just like one office?
Every furniture, new piece of furniture that we purchased received that application, which definitely changed the noise level.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Then roll call, Mr. Boyer.
This is, nope.
Is that voice though?
Nope, that was, that's voice though.
Yeah, okay, we can do that. So all the favors say aye? Aye. Opposed, nay? Nay. Motion passed. That wasn't my name. Sorry.
It's okay.
Superintendent, please.
Yes. Thank you. Just want to share a couple of quick announcements and thank a couple of different areas of staff members. So last week, as we all know, we had a pretty significant amount of snow spread out over the, two snowfalls. And, you know, really for the last couple winters, we haven't had that kind of amount of snow. So I just want to thank Mr. Captain Sully, all of our custodians, our buildings and grounds crew. They always make sure that they're available. They come in, whether it's, you know, a day shift, an evening shift, or over the weekends to report, to make sure that as quickly as possible, we can get the buildings back safe for our students and our staff. We don't have unlimited staff or unlimited equipment, so we have to kind of work around the three buildings to make sure. We do apologize, you know, to students and community members. Sometimes we have to cancel or hold off on an event. I know that's disruptive, but that is an effort to make sure that our staff can make sure each area is safe. So I wanted to point out and thank them. I also want to thank our secondary teachers. We had to kind of modify and get through, and our administrators, the exam schedule to kind of finish out the period and move forward to the next marking period. So it got kind of chopped up, but I thank everybody for their patience and flexibility as we worked through some changes. The next part is as we get out of the snowstorm or kind of moving towards second semester, so on good footing moving forward. So thank you, everyone, for getting through. Hopefully, that's the end. We'll see what the next few weeks brings, but hopefully that's the end of the weather for the night. The first section tonight is Curriculum and Technology. And just to, before I read the motion, there's, you know, seven items in Curriculum and Technology, but the first three were kind of covered extensively at the, at the last meeting. I know Dr. Woodard and Dr. Engel, you know, were here reviewing those, so this is a follow-up from that meeting. And then we have a number of overnight student trips in our music department as well. So with that, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve and ratify the following curriculum and technology items, numbers one through seven.
Do I have a motion? A second? Is there any discussion? I just have a question. The, sorry, band festival at Exeter High School, why does that need an overnight permission form? Because I'm assuming the kids will be returning to their homes.
Well, I'll answer that, and we have some experts in the audience who will answer better if I stay in room. I believe the overnight experience is part of the overall program where they might stay locally to the event. There's events all day, all night, and kind of, I believe it's part of the experience that they do. So even though sometimes it is local and you could commute back and forth, the schedule and the overall experience is kind of comprehensive and overnight. I don't know if I said that right, so please add anything if I missed it.
With the, with the district region festivals, the kids will actually be in rehearsal until almost nine, 9:30 at night, and then they, in this case, they were staying at the Double Tree. And then they get shot back and forth from the Double Trees during the experience because they're there a lot. Thank you.
I also have a question just for clarification, number three, the program of studies, is that, that's not related to what our commenters are speaking on, or is it?
Well, the program of studies primarily allows the students to make their choices of all the courses. Now, I believe there is some language in there in the beginning that provides guidance to students and parents on a number of issues related to scheduling and, you know, braving and marking periods. So I'll defer to Dr. Woodard to maybe differentiate. I know the primary purpose is to choose your courses so we can start to get the kids lined up, but.
The piece of the math that is definitely incorporated into the 2024, 25 program of studies is the sequence, the course sequence. So looking at the eighth grade, the algebraic concepts is part of that program of studies. So we definitely would like to continue that plan, and that's what's incorporated. The nitty gritty of trying to figure out the additional minutes is not necessarily in the program of studies, but the course sequence is at that point.
Yeah, I just want that clarification to keep in mind.
And, and the nitty gritty of the schedule will be something that we're apprised of later and talk about again, or it's a done deal, or it's a progress?
It's not a done deal yet. We've been mediating and working with different departments. We have some options, some options that some departments like better than others, and we're trying to figure out what's the best across the board.
So at a later date, you'll apprise us of some response, perhaps to these folks.
Right.
And just another piece, and not that I'm saying that this is, you know, could have had it different, but the number of kids that are affected by that is a small number?
Across seventh and eighth grade, I mean, we're talking, you know, 10 in one grade, 10 in another grade, you know, of course, the music piece-ish, nine and 10 in each grade level. So, yeah, and, and again, the academic, just to clarify also, that's like 80% of the students in each grade level who are taking the academic level course, not the accelerated course. So we're still talking about the bulk of students, you know, who would be gaining that extra 82 minutes. And when I, I also want to, you know, respond a little bit to say that it is 82 minutes per cycle more than we currently offer our seventh and eighth grade, but comparing it to the sixth grade level, it's still about an hour every cycle less than in math instruction. So even if we are, you know, able to add that 82 minutes, it's still about 62 minutes less than what they've gotten in sixth grade. And that typically at the middle level, the recommendation is at least 60 minutes per day, which we're still short of, you know, even with that addition.
So just to summarize, I think Dr. Woodard has additional meetings, Dr. Jones, teachers, and others, and we'll look with board leadership for a time to, you know, whether it's a workshop or, you know, a meeting to bring back an update and have some more discussion on the actual minutes and schedule and how to provide all the choices for the students to access, you know, what they want to access. So there's more to follow on that. That's not really embedded in an approval tonight.
And can you just remind me, you had told us before, how many minutes, or we're lower than most other school districts in seventh and eighth grade in the county?
By far.
By all of them, by far, in that minutes. All right. Thank you. So any further discussion on this? Then we'll take roll call, throw vote on the motion. Mr. Boyer.
Mrs. Herrenz.
Yes.
Mr. Hershen.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schippers.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes.
Mrs. Savinsky.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
And then just to let the board know, we will quickly get the calendar together and out in the next couple days so that parents have it, employees have it, everybody can make their plans regarding the calendar. And then the junior, senior high program studies, Dr. Jones and the team will continue to kind of roll out. There's, our guidance councils are heavily involved, you know, the parent information nights and student information. So that process begins, but that'll go on for some time. So thank you, Dr. Woodard and everyone on the team for helping us move forward. The next section is financing facilities, and there are, I'll read the motion, but just before I do, a couple of items to just clarify. There are some donations, again, we're always thankful. I can see WAVE with a donation. We have the Wyomissing Area Music Association helping defray the cost of the trip. And then Snap Mobile, I know the cheerleaders have been looking for mats for some time. They're pretty expensive, so I think this is a big movement to get them towards that purchase. And then also on there, the first one is one that I did add over the last couple of weeks with the board. And just to make everyone know, this is just so that we can mechanically move through the Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV funds. Those are funds that we use for kind of ongoing items. They're not really new items that we're out, you know, doing. They sustain a portion of the items we're doing. It is really difficult not to have the electronic access to the documents, so this really just goes from a paper signature to allowing me, it sounds, when you write it, to see much more than it is, but it's just being able to kind of authorize an okay that we are spending those title funds within the ways we described to the state that we're spending, or to the federal government. So I don't know if I said that right, Dr. Woodard, but I think it's more of a mechanical than really any new contracts or new programs or new services. So with that, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve and ratify the following financing facility items, numbers one through six.
Do I have a motion? So move. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? I had a random question, Dr. Lengel. The cost per evaluation for the bilingual services, is that for the service that provides the evaluation, or is there interpreter interpreting for a psychologist providing?
Now, she does, I would say, probably 75% of the evaluation, and then our psychologist still does some portions of it. We only are using her, I think we used her once last year, in a, in a scenario where the child and the family speaks no English in order to deliver any type of fidelity with those assessments. Otherwise, we use TransPerfect.
Thank you. Then roll call, Mr. Boyer.
Mr. Hershen.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schippers.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes.
Mrs. Savinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrenz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
The next section is personnel and policy. And before I ask for the motion, I just wanted to share a few thoughts or highlight a couple items. This time of year is always a tough time of year. Our teachers, our teaching staff lets know typically by mid-January.
Then roll call, Mr. Soren.
Mr. Hershey.
Yes.
Mrs. Coon.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schippers.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes.
Mrs. Zavinsky.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
The next section is personnel and policy. And before I ask for the motion, I just wanted to share a few thoughts or highlight a couple of items. This time of year is always a tough time of year. Our teachers, our teaching staff lets know typically by mid-January that they intend to retire at the end of the school year. So some years, we have two or three, and other years, we may have, you know, four or five or six. But it's always a tough time of the year because we're saying thank you over the next few months to some teachers that have, you know, given, you know, decades of service to us and the daunting task to go out and try to hire replacements that can fill those shoes. So I just did want to point out, we have three professional retirements. We have Glenn Johnston, school psychologist, Margaret Schongard, Spanish teacher at the junior senior high school, and Colleen Vargo, math teacher at the junior senior high school. Again, we thank each of them. And also, we have Michael Acera, our first shift custodian here at the junior senior high school, retiring after about 15 years of service. So in each case, each of these employees were here 15-plus years, you know, for the school district, so we wanted to say thank you. We do invite all of our retirees back in May. We have a gift and we share some time with the Board, so we will have a chance, hopefully, that they'll all come back and participate. But if you do run into those folks over the next few months, please do the same and pass on a thank you. On another note, we'd like to welcome, in our appointment section, we have Alexis, goes by Lexi, pole, our Director of Food Services. We know Mrs. Marrero left to take a position in Allentown, and we're glad to have Alexis here on our team. She did start. I know Mr. Soren works closely with her, and we look forward to the work she'll do to support our food services at our three schools. And with that, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve and ratify the following personnel and policy items as presented, and that's numbers one through eight.
Is there a motion? Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Soren.
Mrs. Coon.
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schippers.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Torres.
Yes.
Mrs. Zavinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Rensselaar.[1745.82]